I'd like to call the committee, the whole meeting of the municipality Jasper council to order. Today is October 12. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda needed for today? All right. Having said that, may I have a motion to accept? The agenda as proposed. Councillors, you know, all in favor? Not opposed, that's carry. All right. We have the minutes presented as attached. Are there any changes to be made to the minutes? That were circulated? I'm sorry, I'm kind of ad libbing here. My normal device that I read the council meetings on has been upgraded and I lost my ability to to track for the moment. So I'm doing this off of my phone. I have one change to be made to the minutes. Of September 28. Unfortunately, I had to step away when we took our. I think fifth break, maybe that day. But it should be noted that at 321, 331 that councillor Jono assumed chair as the acting deputy mayor or alternate deputy. Whatever the term may be. I think just to keep the just to have some proper housekeeping there, not to get too technical. Are there any other changes to be made? Okay, there are none. They have a motion to accept the minutes for today. Or from the 28, sorry. Okay, councillor Wilson, all in favor? Then oppose that scary. All right, agenda item number five presentations. We don't have any today that I know of. Okay. All right. So that brings us to agenda item number six, business arising from the minutes. Does anyone have anything to discuss to bring up from our last discussion two weeks ago? All right. As we move along, we've become really efficient, especially on our last date. Agenda I am number seven, new business. We've got 7.1, the COVID relief reserve income based utility rebates. Mister Given, would you like to kick that up, please?
Yes, thanks very much. Deputy Mayor Demota, council in front of you, you have a report on utility rebates. I'll lead you through the report, trying to cover the high points. I know you've all had a chance to read it. But it is, there, there's a number of different items to consider in administration's recommendation. So we'll take it from the top. You'll see in the recommendation, administration is suggesting a maximum program funding amount of $90,000 to be funded from the COVID recovery reserve. Administration is recommending that rebates be applied to qualifying businesses based on the number of days closed due to public health restrictions. And I'll speak about why we're recommending that rather than income based. Administration is further recommending the program should be funded on a first come, first served basis until the program funds are expended. And the council give administration direction to begin accepting applications no later than December 1st, 2021. Of course, there are alternatives. Council can choose to amend any of those numbers or timelines that are in the administration recommendation. Council could choose to provide direction to administration or revise the program in some other way and return back to committee after the municipal election. Or committee could receive this report for information, essentially taking no action and not establishing a rebate program of any kind. So there are alternatives there for council. In terms of background, I think it's important to note that council has taken a number of actions this term in response to the COVID pandemic. Starting in 2020 with curtailing of municipal services. To ensure that we were keeping costs as low as possible. And then moving into 2021 where council applied a one time $1 million property tax rebate. And established a COVID recovery reserve. Following the receipt of the Economic Recovery Task Force recommendations, council has approved a number of other actions. Including $24,000 towards a public transportation pilot project, which concluded just recently. $24,000 towards the development of community childcare strategy, which will be happening in the new year. $20,000 towards advocacy for the elimination of land rent. And $30,000 up to $30,000 to partner with tourism Jasper, the creation of a destination development strategy. Additionally, more recently, on October 5th, council approved waiving penalties on past due property taxes for the period of July 16th to September 30th, 2021, and that'll be an approximate cost of $78,000 in foregone revenue for this year. The, as council knows and the community knows, the municipality operates water, wastewater, solid waste or garbage, if we want to call it that, and recycling utilities in the municipality. And each of the utilities are largely funded through user fees, although not exclusively. But these fees are generally intended to reflect the the customer's consumption of that service. And well, the actual number of utility accounts can fluctuate throughout the course of the year. Due to closures of accounts and seasonal closures and new businesses starting up. The municipality typically has just under 1300 total accounts, 90, approximately 90 of which are commercial accounts. Throughout the pandemic, the government of Alberta has initiated a number of public health orders, which have had some effect on bill. The ability of businesses to operate. In some cases, these have required businesses to fully close. In other cases, they have imposed limitations on capacity or the style of business that operators can deliver. And also through the pandemic, the governments of Canada and Alberta have established a number of economic supports for businesses and individuals. Including items such as waves, wage subsidies and unexpanded unemployment benefits and a number of others. At the local government level, many municipalities, including the municipality Jasper, have provided some relief using the property tax system, which this council has done. As I referenced earlier, the million dollar one time application in 2021. The municipality of Jasper, similar to other municipalities, has also frozen property taxes in the 2020 year and has deferred payment deadlines in the 2021 year. And as this council has done, has waived penalties for for 2021. Other municipalities have chosen to provide more direct financial resources through some type of targeted supports. And that's really what we're here discussing today in in the form of utility rebates. So in our municipality, water and wastewater rates are directly tied to a user's actual consumption. And it means that if there is no consumption, then the rates go down essentially to zero. And so when we think about that for utility rebates, if there was a business that was closed, their operation was was not allowed to proceed. And they did not have, did not consume water, then their their rates there would decline accordingly. The same is not true for solid waste or garbage. And I'm sorry, I'll use those terms interchangeably, solid waste and garbage. But I differentiate that from recycling. Recycling and solid waste have fees attached to them, whether or not the business actually uses the service in a given month. In the case of solid waste, each commercial account pays a minimum bimonthly billing of $288.37. And in the case of recycling, they pay a flat charge of $31.12. And again, just to reiterate, because these are not actually, these minimums are not char tied to consumption. Even if a business was fully closed for a month or two months or more, they would still incur these charges and they could not be avoided. Because of this, and because of the fact that water wastewater charges are reduced along with consumption. Administration in this report is suggesting that an appropriate approach for council to consider would be to rebate fees associated with solid waste and recycling for businesses who are impacted by closures due to public health restrictions. In terms of program eligibility, as council, council's direction was to consider an income based approach. And when administration considered that, we identified that it could present a number of challenges. Including the administrative burden for businesses, the costs of applying privacy concerns around the disclosure of private business financial information. There's also some challenges around the efficiency of processing and administration's ability to validate submissions and to isolate causes of reduced income. You know, there unquestionably, everyone's income was impacted by the public health restrictions and the COVID pandemic. But it could be challenging to identify from one business to the next, what percentage of reduced income was due to that? Compared to other potential issues that that may be happening. With this in mind, administration is suggesting that the best approach that would provide for the most privacy for business owners, while also being reflective of the impact of public health restrictions would be to base rebates on the number of days where the business was either fully closed or partially closed due to provincial public health orders. So this approach is less invasive, easier to validate, because those public health orders are still on the web. And we'd be able to identify specific periods that specific businesses would have been closed. And then we can apply the rebates accordingly. Finally, sorry, nearly finally. In terms of the program term, the public first Alberta Public Health Order that required business closures was approved on March 17th of 2020. There were, of course, a number of off and on starts and restarts. Revisions, refinements, relaxations and reinstatements. Each had a different impact on different types of businesses. Administration, based on this, administration is recommending that the any program council establishes should begin from March 17th of 2020 and continue on to October 31st of 2021. So that would be this month. Administration would further propose that the program should be open for applications, beginning no later than December 1st of this year. And that it should remain open for applications until March 31st, 2022, or until all program funds have been allocated, whichever comes first. This does sort of leave a question of, well, how much font, how much? How many, how many dollars are required to support such a program? As I noted earlier, there are approximately 90 commercial accounts. Each businesses faces a combined monthly, and I just want to be clear, we bill on a bimonthly cycle, but just for ease of math and to make it a little bit clearer for everybody. We've done it here, calculated on a monthly basis. Each business faces a combined monthly garbage and recycling minimum charge of $159.75. And there have been 19 months since March of 2020. So if the municipality provided rebates reflecting the full cost of garbage and recycling fees for all of our 90 commercial accounts for that entire period. The maximum potential financial exposure for the municipality would be just over $273,000. So well, that's the maximum potential. Administration would note that some businesses were never closed. While others were closed fully or only partially and just for some specific periods of that time. So while the maximum exposure would be the 19 months times the 90 businesses times the total amount. Administration doesn't suggest that that's the amount that the program would need to be funded by. We would suggest that a more likely amount would be $90,000 would be appropriate funding level for the program. And we would suggest that that this program should be delivered on a first come, first served basis. And that if any funds are remaining in the program after March 31st, 22, that they be returned to the COVID relief reserve. And to be specific about the funding source, administration is recommending that this needs to be funded from the COVID relief reserve. As these funds were already recognized as revenue in the 2020 year and in some in the 2022 year. And so this is not the same as foregone revenue as we discussed last meeting with the waiver of penalties. This is actually a rebate of revenue that the municipality has already captured and so needs to come from some source. Finally, the question of what the rebate amount might be. Again, administration attempted to find a way that would reflect the impact of a closure on business and its resulting reduction of demand on municipal utility services. And we suggest that for each month, a business was fully closed for more than 50% of the days. A re, the full rebate of $159.75 be provided. For each month that the business was fully closed for less than 50% of the days. A partial rebate of $79 or half the rebate and $79.87 be provided. And then for each month that the business was partially closed. And now in terms of partially, there were businesses that were operating under capacity limits. For periods of this time, there were capacity limits or other other approaches which required retail businesses, for example, to have curbside pickup only. So that's what we determine as as partially closed. In those cases, the maximum amount for if business was partially closed still able to operate, but under limitations. For an entire month, the rebate would be $79.87. And if the business was partially closed for less than 50% of the month, a rebate of $39.94 would be provided. I know that's a bit complicated, especially when you hear it and read it in text form. That's why we provided the matrix in the reports that you could see at least, I think, a little bit more clearly. If a business was fully closed for less than 50% of the day, 50% of the month, excuse me. The business would qualify for $79.87 for that month. If the business was fully closed for more than half the days in the month, they would qualify for the full rebate amount of $159.75. So I, I hope that that's a little bit clearer in the in the table. We also provided in the report some examples. So a personal services business that was fully closed from March 27th, 2020 to June 12th, 2020 would receive a total rebate of $479.24 reflective of being closed for less than 50% of March. So they only received $79.87 for March, but for April and May, they were fully closed for the full month. So they would be qualified for the full rebate of $159.75 for each of those months. And then in June, they were fully closed, but only up until the 12th, so less than 50% of the days in that month. And so they qualify for that 50% rebate. Another example would be an entertainment business. These businesses are some of the ones that had the most extended full closures of all types of businesses. So in this example, we have a business that was fully closed from March 27th to June 12th. And again, from February 8th, 2021 to July 1st, 2021. And in that case, that business would receive partial rebates for the month of March, the months of March and June 2020. And then full rebates for February, March, April, May and June of 2021. Leaving a total, giving a total rebate amount of $1,200, sorry, $1,288.99. So I hope that those examples are helpful. If council followed the administrative recommendations contained in this report and allocated $90,000 to fund the utility rebate program. That would leave the COVID recovery reserve with an unallocated balance of just under $1 million, $966,712 that could be used in the future through either the 2022 budget process or future budget processes. With that, Deputy Mayor Demota, I'll, I'll pause. I know council will likely have lots of debate and maybe some questions for me. So open to you for questions that council might wish to ask.
Good. I'll give you a moment to catch your breath. That was a lot of info. And you know what? For me, pretty much answered every single question that I had. When I first opened this document over the weekend and, you know, I really appreciate the detail. It's there. I, I don't have any other questions. I like the, the matrix. I like the reasoning. I like the math. Everything works for me. The only question that I might have is just how this is going to come forward as a motion down the road, because we can't make any decisions today. It's our last meeting of this council. So this is going to rest as a decision for the next council. And I'm looking at the timeline that you have accepted no later than December 1st. We're not sure exactly when the first regular council meeting is going to be. And I think this is a lot for the next council to decide. I think it's been teed up perfectly. It should be a no brainer. I don't want to influence the next council by any means. However, I'm just worried about capacity on administration end. Not that that's any of our business, but you know, having those things into consideration, will that give you and maybe the next council enough time to pass a motion if it is accepted and then roll out as far as people being able to access funding?
Yeah, thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Demota. We are obviously in a, in a challenging time with one council preparing to conclude its term and hand off to the next council. Now, as you say, I think that that's, there is an opportunity for this council to tee up this issue for the next council. And if this motion as contained in the report was passed, recommending it forward. We would see that coming to what I believe should be the first regular council meeting in November, which would be November 2nd. You know, the report, as you said, is intentionally quite detailed to give council the details that they need. We would brief up the next council before they reviewed the issue with a little bit of an extra briefing, rather than just sort of at the table during the council meeting. And if council chose to pass it at that November 2nd meeting, that would still give administration plenty of time to be able to open up for program applications. We, in fact, I wouldn't wait. We would start to develop application forms and that sort of thing. So that on the on the assumption or in order to be ready, should council approve it on the second. So we would not hold back work. We do any sort of preparatory work that we could do without getting too far down the path in front of a council approval.
I don't know. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but that sounds like rubber stamp to me almost. And I don't think we should be doing that. But anyway, and but at the same time, I appreciate that you have to be ready. Again, no assumptions, but the council meetings will get set at the organizational meeting. We can assume that things might go as they have in the past, but we don't know what the next council is gonna to need for meeting times. Anyone else? I'd like to open up the floor after my questions. Surely we have some comments to be made, councillors? Councillor Butler?
Thank you very much, Mister Given. It's a very complete report, as you pointed out. To allow us, I think, to, well, we can't make a decision to move this forward with clear indication of intent. I really only was left with one question or concern. I do understand while the direction was to approach this from an income based, on an income basis. I, I think administration has come up with a good alternative and I understand the complexities and difficulties that could could come about if we try to go forward on what many might see as a more fair basis being income. But the breadth of interpretation that would be required could make that honestly, just a bit of a morass. And would potentially result in a sense of even less fairness. So there's no perfect system, no perfect way to do something like this. And myself, I'm prepared to accept that recommendation. I only have one small piece that is around the first come, first serve pro forma. I agree in principle, but it occurs to me that reading through the parameters and way in which applications would be qualified. It could be that there's going to have to be some interpretation and reinterpretation of how the parameters are applied as we see what the applications look like. Particularly in the naughty area of difficult area of partial closures, you know, what does that mean? There were seating capacity restrictions. Some businesses, maybe because they were forced, but it would, or because it was their really only alternative. Devolved to take away only in the case of some restaurants. So it might be that rather than proceeding on strictly a first come, first serve basis, you might want to consider having an initial intake of applications. And then assessing them together so that you can kind of look at how they compare and so on. And evolve the application of parameters as necessary. And then deal with those and then open for another intake or something like that rather than because I'd hate to see a situation where an early application was assessed in a certain way. And then we got some later applications that made us rethink. And the, there could be an impression of a lack of equity between the way different applications were, were assessed. Other than that, I'm broadly in favor and would be certainly happy to see this pressed forward to that upcoming regular meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Mayor Ireland, please go ahead. And then you, Councillor Jono, for sure.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota, through you to Mister Given. Thank you so much for a really thorough report. And I agree that moving from what council initially suggested an income base to a closure basis makes a lot of sense for a number of reasons. Picking up on, on the point that we just made about first come, first serve, I have concerns about that as well, but I, I look at it more in terms of the maximum program funding amount and why we would fix it necessarily at $90,000. We could, we could eliminate a rush for claims if we expanded the limit. And I recognize that the outer limit, if everybody was closed the entire time, would be 236,000. And we know that it's not going to be that. But it could be more than than 90,000. And I appreciate you did some sort of calculation on that, but it's not clear to me exactly how that worked and why we would necessarily limit it to 90,000. So I would just suggest that although I agree in, in general with the recommendation, I would like to and I can wait till we get to debate on this because it's not really for you, but I just wonder whether there is any solid math behind the $90,000 figure. And the other question that I have for you is with respect to the reason for closures, it seems to me that we might offer the rebate because these businesses were not contributing to our waste stream. And so whether they were closed pursuant to public health order or because they were just more cautious or because they had a local outbreak and had no staff or because they just couldn't get staff. All of that to me is somewhat irrelevant. The point is, businesses in our community were not operating and therefore we're not contributing to our waste stream and yet we charge them utility rates. So I would like to see some work on the qualification related to the closure rather than say, if you were closed specifically as a result of an order from the provincial government is the only way to qualify. I think if you're closed, you're closed and you're not producing waste, we shouldn't be charged for it. So I, again, that might be a question better posed to my council colleagues for debate rather than than you, but I, I see it as a limitation on how we might approach the overall matter. Thank you, Councillor. Sorry, thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota. That's it.
That's fine. Good points and and appreciate the feedback. Mister Given, point of clarity before I hand it over to Councillor Jono?
Yes, Deputy Mayor Demota, I heard Mayor Ireland ask a specific question about the math behind the, the 90,000 program funding. When we look, so there, there was some, there is some reason behind that number. Whether it's, you know, it's up to council to decide whether it's a good reason or not. But when we looked at this, you can see that the, the example B, an entertainment business that was fully closed for the longest period, that, that seemed to be, unless there's some other example that we weren't aware of. That seemed to be the type of business that had the most extreme impact. And so, you know, and that would have, have the largest rebate amount of that 12, you know, just over $1,200. The maximum program grant amount, you know, again, leave some extra room if there's somebody that we didn't account for or that the closures were longer. The recommendation has a maximum rebate amount of $2,000. $2,000 would be 45 businesses, you know, that, you know, we could give out 45 rebates at the maximum of $2,000. So if we had 45 businesses that were closed and qualified for, you know, so half of our businesses were fully closed for the full amount of time. We would be able to manage that. And so administration thought that that was a reasonable estimate that provided some flexibility without over committing. Overcommitting the COVID recovery reserve. Because it is, will be important to the next council through their budget to have, to understand how much is available in that reserve. So that they can make choices about what they wish to do in the twenty twenty two budget or for any other programs. Of course. The recommendation for administration still leaves open the opportunity for the next council. If they chose to do so to reestablish a program, you know, if the ninety thousand dollars all of a sudden was claimed. By qualifying businesses and the program was fully allocated. You know, before the end of the, the end of the program period. Or at the program period, then the council of the day could choose to say, well, that was important and there are businesses who have missed out. That would have qualified and therefore we'd like to reissue the program with new funding. But administration's recommendation here does provide that top level so that we can at least have some certainty around budget. And, and we think that it is a reasonable limitation on the program. Because I would be surprised if there were more than forty five businesses. That would qualify for grant amounts of two thousand dollars. So that, that was the logic that we applied to it. It is absolutely up to council to decide whether that logic is sound and how, how you might like to, to judge it. The other thing that I would say is that in terms of identifying why somebody was closed, administration did try to take the most objective measure. That we could, could validate. So the all provincial health orders are published on the web. I would imagine us establishing essentially a timeline. That show, a chart that says, you know, for this date period to this date period, these types of businesses were closed. If you're one of those types of businesses, then you qualify for this grant. And I think that that would be a very straightforward and again, a, objective way of measuring. If there are other types of measurements, the council would see the caution that I would extend would be to ask you to consider. The subjectivity, you know, if, we know that in Jasper, there are some businesses that close for the winter season. And so the question would be, what was that business going to be closed anyways? I'm not, I'm not sure at this stage how to assess that. It may be something that council might need to consider. With utility rates going forward and deciding about how much is in a base rate versus how much is on a consumption. We've had that discussion with respect to water and wastewater. I think it might be worthwhile in discussing with solid waste and recycling as well. But for the purposes of applying a rebate, administration was simply looking for the most objective source. So that we could ensure that we were fairly qualifying rebate applications. Rather than having some subjective measure that administration would have to try to apply because. Yeah, that, that could have been challenging for us. So that's why the recommendation is structured the way it is.
Thank you, Mr. Given. That answered two or three questions that I had on deck. Councillors, you know, thank you for your patience. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. I have two points or comments. First of all, I'm glad that you've made provisions. For the seasonal closures of businesses that may be applying. Saying that they're closed, but they're, they're always closed anyways and the date that they reopen might be subject to discussion and that hopefully. Will have discussion that you and the administration team will have to work out on. Secondly, it's a comment more than anything and it's a comment in your comments in, in the preamble. About foregone revenues of seventy eight thousand. When I, the way I interpret foregone revenues, I see that as something that was in the budget that then we didn't get. And I'm not aware that we had budgeted for revenues for penalties in our budget. So I, I need. Like, it seemed to indicate that we've lost revenue there, but it's not something we budgeted for. In my, at least that's the way I see it. Thank you. I may not have worded this properly, but.
Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Given.
Thank, thanks Deputy Mayor Demota for councillors' journal. Councillors, you know. Administration does budget for penalty revenue as a part of our annual process. We always have. We do need to make some estimate of what we forecast penalties to be. And so. The seventy eight thousand dollars is a part of foregone revenue. So it is, again, as we discussed last time. This revenue is not the same as paying out something. It is just choosing to, to not to collect something. But we do make estimations of all types of penalty revenue in the budget as a regular course of business. So it was in fact something that we had. Have a number in our budget for penalty revenue.
So was the budget amount that, that, was that the budgeted amount?
No, that is not reflective of the budget amount because we budget on a whole year basis. The seventy eight thousand is only for the period of July to September. As you'll remember, and so there are penalties annually. Some people carry year over year from January to July. We also budget for things like. Buy law tickets and other things. So I can find the total amount that was in the twenty twenty one budget for. Tax penalty revenue, I could find that for you, but it is. Not material at this point. The, the point is that the seventy eight thousand dollars is money that we have chosen to not collect. That we would otherwise be entitled to. So foregone revenue.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Councillors, you know, you had a couple of questions. Did you get both of them in or have you, are you satisfied?
But I, I, I would like to know what the amount of the budgeted penalties was for, for this year. Please and thank you.
Okay, I, I'm hoping that's not for today.
I think we can probably collect it, Deputy Mayor Demota.
Okay, councillor Keller Rambi.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. I really like the work in this. Thank you, Mr. Given and your staff and. I'm happy to put the motion on the table. That committee recommends council approve the establishment of the utility rate. Rebate program reflected about the following. Maximum program funding of ninety thousand to be provided from the COVID recovery reserve. Rebates to qualifying businesses based on days closed due to public health restrictions. Up to a maximum of total rebate of two thousand per business. And programs shall be funded on a first come, first served basis until the total program funds are expected. An application to begin to be accepted no later than December first twenty twenty one.
I appreciate that and I appreciate the use of semicolons in that recommendation. I'm a big fan of them and. I like to see them used appropriately when we can. So that's good. Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. I would open up to the rest of council for debate. Does anybody have any positions they'd like to take or questions, further questions? Councillor Butler.
Thank you. To my point earlier about the first come, first served basis. I'm not sure it's necessary or because of that concern I raised, desirable to have that wording in the motion. I'm not sure that that needs to be part of the direction to administration. I don't know how others feel, but I think the motion is just as strong without saying. On a first come, first served basis and would allow administration to. Exercise a little latitude there in respect of what I was talking about. So I might propose that we simply strike the words on a first come, first served basis. When I say I might propose it. Just interested to know what others think about that point I raised earlier. And perhaps what Mr. Given feels about it. I, we didn't hear a response from Mr. Given to that.
Well, and you know what?
Concern, I didn't ask for one either.
No, and you know what? I'm going to, just for a point of clarity on that too. I wanted to ask that and I thought it might have been answered. But maybe not. So i- if you're repeating yourself, Mr. Given, I apologize, but if we can get some clarity on that. Because I, I'm sure it was, it was thought beforehand why that should go in there.
Sure. Thanks very much Deputy Mayor Demota. So that is a bit of a caveat for administration, just to be able to identify. You know, to, to put some boundaries on the program. Again, I think the math is pretty solid, the total program funding, you know, I. I would be hard pressed to imagine forty five businesses who are fully closed for that full period. That would fully expand the ninety thousand dollars. I think it's more likely that we would end the program period with money unallocated. Based on, on this program outline. And in that case, the first come, first served would not be particularly important. I think it, you know, it does though create some incentive for businesses to apply rather than waiting until the program deadline. So. But I don't believe it's integral to the program by any means. And if it was struck from the motion, I don't think it would really impact. I mean, it does not impact the way administration would deliver the program.
Thank you for that clarity.
Sorry Deputy Mayor, just, just answer councillor Jono's question from earlier before. About tax penalty revenue contained in the budget. The twenty twenty one budget contained a forecast of eighty three thousand dollars in tax penalty revenue. So just to provide that information, Natasha was able to dig that up for me and pass it on. But the twenty twenty one budget. Contained a forecast of eighty three thousand dollars in tax penalty revenue.
And that's overall tax penalty revenue. Thank you. Okay. Appreciate the clarification and the speediness of that. Other councillors, comments, concerns? Go ahead, your worship.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. I will speak in favor of the motion and I, I will support the motion. I, I am unclear right now whether it includes. The third bullet point or not, that is the, the first come, first served bullet. And I would propose, and I appreciate that this may. Then entail consternation at the administrative level, but in the second bullet. I would propose to councillor Keller Herempe a friendly amendment. To change the wording to say closed due to public health restrictions. And unable to reopen due to COVID related issues. To encompass the fact that you may have had to close, but. Then even though the government says you can reopen, you, you don't have staff because of COVID or, or whatever the issue. I appreciate the challenge that that poses for administration, but I think in fairness. You can't just expect that businesses could necessarily reopen just because of a need from the province. So. I, I would support that, but I would support the recommendation and come back to another council for approval and so the topic can be. Rediscussed if necessary, but I think that it, it would, in my view at least. Improve the motion at this time. But I, regardless of whether or not you accept that, councillor Keller Herempe, I, I will vote in favor of the motion.
Go ahead councillor Keller.
I'm happy to accept that, Mayor Ireland. I also agree that businesses have closed and they haven't been able to open right away. Due to the lack of staff and it shouldn't be penalized for that either.
Thank you. And if other councillors are, are trying to generate or calculating some thought there. I'll just step in and, and I'll give my point that. I, I like the way it's, it's presented. I'm happy with the recommendation for that amendment. I'm still not entirely clear if councillor Butler made a friendly amendment to have. The first come, first served stricken from that. I certainly, I just, I want to say that I appreciate it because. I don't want to insult our, our local tax base or whatever, but there is this thing known as Jasper time. And, you know, I think it's, it's a good way, I, I think to entice people to get in as soon as you can. Hopefully, if there's a greater demand than, than the full amount that's, you know, put into that recommendation that. The next council will find a way to, to help out businesses if the calculations are a bit off. I think the intention is to help out. People that were forced to close. So that's my point and I'll be in favor of this. Thank you. Councillor Butler, point of clarification.
Yeah, thanks. The reason I didn't clarify whether I was suggesting that we remove that wording is I kind of wanted to hear. Views on it and because I am in favor of Mayor Ireland's. Suggestion for a change. I think we should just leave that wording in there because, you know, we may, we've already made a small change in the program that could. Change outcomes, perhaps increase output a little bit. I'm sure administration won't apply the first come, first served. Caveat so closely that it comes, becomes in any way unfair. So I think we're better off leaving it in there. Because every program should have some sense of outer limits and that helps to achieve that. So I'll make no. Suggestion of an amendment.
Okay, has everyone had time to, to give it some thought? Before I go to councillor Keller, Keller Herempe to close. Any more comments or questions? All right, councillor Keller Herempe.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. I think it's a great program for our businesses that need help. And I'm looking forward for this going on front to the next council for approval and for their input. I think it's a great way for the new council to start. It's a great topic and it's a huge topic in town and it's very important. Thank you, councillor Demota.
All right. So I don't believe that we need to repeat the motion. Everyone understands it. We understand the amendment. So I'm going to call it. All in favor? Okay, non-opposed, that one's carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Appreciate the discussion on that. And I also want to say again that I appreciate the amount of work that went behind this and the clarity. And the, the thoughtfulness. So I think it really helps council out in, in expediting decisions anyway. That went particularly smooth. So that brings us up to the next. Oh, does anybody else have any questions before? Or comments before I move on? I tend to rush, so I, if anybody wanted to say anything else, I want to give them the chance. Okay. Nope. Seven point two, the Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Master Plan. Twenty twenty, sorry, two thousand twenty two to two thousand twenty six. Mr. Given, please.
Thanks very much Deputy Mayor Demota. I'm just going to provide some of the overall contextual comments and then Ms. Riddell is here and she'll provide. Some insight into the plan as a whole. But this really comes as a result of council's inclusion work this term. Council previously passed Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Policy. And on the adoption of that policy, directed administration to return to a future committee meeting with a plan for policy implementation. The master plan that you see in front of you is administration's recommendation on how we would activate. Council's policy direction in work within administration. The plan lays out work over the course of a number of years. I just want to make that point because. Council may have previously seen administrative procedures. And it doesn't seem that there's a really long history of having master planning documents in the municipality. The intent of a document like this would be to lay out significant work that's in line with council's policy direction. So that administration could budget for it and work it into business plans and individual work plans. Over the course of a number of years, I think, as you have, have a chance to review the plan, you'll see that it's not anything that's going to happen in the space of one year's time. It is intended to be work that would happen over time as resources allow. And so. The idea of a master plan is that provides guidance for administration over a longer time period and then administration. Once the plan is adopted, administration incorporates the recommendations and action plans into our future budget presentations. And our work over the course, over the term of the master plan period. So. I just wanted to provide that to council. This is again, building on your policy direction. And demonstrates how administration would bring that policy direction to life over the course of a number of years. But I'm going to ask Ms. Riddell to come on and she can cover some of the highlights of the plan, the way that it's structured and maybe some of the actions that are there. And I'll just note for council that the intent today is for you to get a first look at this plan. To provide some input and feedback and then to give us direction to take the plan away, to work with the inclusion committee. To revise the plan accordingly and then bring back to next council for final adoption and approval. So this is another item that will straddle to council terms. But we thought since this council has done so much work on inclusion, that was appropriate that you have an opportunity to provide some feedback. even though it will ultimately come to the next council for formal adoption. Ms. Riddell, turn it over to you if you'd like to discuss the details of the plan.
Thanks, Mr. Given, and to to Deputy Mayor Demota and all of council. So the the plan in front of you is definitely still in draft format. But as Mr. Given indicated, we really wanted to make sure that this council had a chance to look at the plan and share feedback as well in the spirit of the Measuring Municipal Inclusion Grant Funded Project, engaging all levels of the organization, wanted to make sure that we included this council in the process. So in front of you is the draft five-year EDNI master plan. And that was with the direction that we received from council on the sixth. Community Development Engaged Inclusion Committee members in the work of developing this plan, which would be how we foresee sort of implementing the policy level direction we receive from council. The work of engaging the inclusion committee is part of this Measuring Municipal Inclusion Grant. It's a grant funded project that does come to an end on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. So the draft plan attached presents a framework for the next five years of working towards equitable municipal policy and operations. It outlines the organization's commitment and guiding principles for plan implementation over time. The second part of the plan is broken down into several areas of focus, which includes specific activities that are detailed as well as measurable results, which are indicated as outputs and the desired change, which is indicated as the outcome. This is what the change we wish to see from implementing these activities. So some activities would be implemented by all municipal employees while others would be led by the cross departmental work of the inclusion committee. So it's important, I think, to note that although this Measuring Municipal Inclusion Grant has been quite inward facing for the last year and a half, the EDNI policy that was endorsed by council is very much twofold. It's inward facing, but also outward, looking at the organization's role in the community. So the EDNI master plan mirrors that and several areas of focus are, I guess, focused inward at the organization. But another, I think, six areas of focus are really looking at the municipality as a leader in equity, diversity and inclusion work in the broader community. The master plan will guide efforts to build a diverse and inclusive workforce and provide inclusive, accessible and equitable programs and services for our residents. It's a longer term guiding document that will ensure that the EDNI policy is considered and applied organization wide in all aspects of day to day operations and higher level decision making. Something worth noting is that, as with many things, this is a work in progress. The municipality is learning constantly about emerging or best practices when it comes to advancing its EDNI efforts. And so over five years, we will undoubtedly learn more and and different ways that we can do better. So the plan will be updated and amended over time to reflect that continuous learning. This master plan is the culmination of a year and a half of collaborative work between inclusion committee members. I appreciate the the interest and the enthusiasm from the inclusion committee and specifically as well, my colleagues in community development that worked very hard to get this, make sure it was prepared and ready to be in front of council today. Endorsement of the draft EDNI master plan would allow the municipality to take steps to ensure that organizational strategic planning and business planning are done through an EDNI lens and that the organization's priorities are in line with its vision. The recommended activities within the EDNI master plan will require a commitment of resources over the five year period. Resources to start work on the plan have been incorporated into the two thousand twenty-two budget for review. And any additional resources required would be presented to council in the context of future budgets. I'm available to answer any questions and appreciate your feedback. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Riddell. Am I saying that properly? Have I said that properly? Is it Mrs. Riddell or Ms. Riddell?
Neither is fine. Thanks.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Counselor McGrath.
Thank you very much Deputy Mayor Demota and thank you very much, Mrs. Riddell, for your presentation and and the thoughtful work that went behind and into this. I I really appreciate and would like to take a moment to express gratitude to yourself and Mrs. Palte and your team at Community Development as well as the entire inclusion committee for developing this really beautifully done EDNI master plan. It's comprehensive. It does reflect our commitment to inclusion, diversity and equity. It sets us up for the future and specifically in the next five years. And allows us to set an example as a leader and as an organizational champion for other entities in our community. It's it's exactly where we need to be. And I I thank you very much for all the amazing work that's went into this.
Thank you very much, Counselor McGrath. Do other counselors have any comments or questions on? On this item? No? Okay, Counselor Keller, I'm.
I just want to echo Counselor McGrath. This is awesome work. I'm very excited for a little time I said on the Immigration Coalition. And I think I can see this rolled in here too, to work with our refugees and all our newcomers to town. So I'm quite excited about this project and I think the new council going forward will have a lot of work to do with you guys on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors. No.
Thank you. This community has always been inclusive. We've never had any exclusivity whatsoever. And I'm glad that the other levels of government were sponsoring or helping us provide some funding for this. This is a great document. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Butler.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Riddell, to yourself and your team for your work on this. It's a great document. I think it is both reflective of the inclusivity that is present in our communities, Council General said already and has been, but it is also aspirational in guiding us forward to become even better. So I would be happy to move that committee receiving municipality Jasper's two thousand twenty-two to twenty-six Equity Diversity and Inclusion Master Plan for information. And that committee direct administration to revise the plan as required. Oh, no, I'm not making any such recommendation. I will full stop at that. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the the report and this presentation on on the plan. I think it's, it really sets up the next council to to synchronize their master plan for their strategic plan. And hopefully vice versa, there's going to be some good integration here. Personally, for someone from from someone who has gone through a few struggles when first coming to Jasper and in some of the businesses that I worked in. You know, I I really appreciate that. One of my my recent corporations that I worked for was already going in this direction and I like to see this at this level. One of my prouder moments was when we had the diversity project in the community. And I like to see these advancements go forward. So this is huge. I I hope I get to work with it on the next council. So I'm, however that may be, but I I like the way this has been set up and I like the material in here and what it really means. And it it, there's a lot of thought behind it and I appreciate the work. Thank you. Counselor Wilson.
Just to comment on both Counselor Butler and Counselors, your notes comments about we haven't had a problem with inclusivity or diversity, it's we we haven't. We aren't intentionally, you know, leaving people out. But our administration, you know, I think our municipality as a whole, if you look at it as a broad spectrum, it's it's pretty whitewashed, you know, and and I think we're working towards it and, you know, a plan like this will assist us, but we also look across, you know, all the faces on this Zoom meeting. You know, we we have some work to do, not to say that we're not to point any fingers at anybody, but we are, we need to move forward. And a document like this assists us in doing that. And I I think this is great work. I, you know, applaud everybody involved in it. And but it is necessary and it'll assist us moving forward with becoming more, you know, inclusive, diverse and and equal, I guess, not equity, but thank you for that, Ms. Riddell, and the report to using this as a document and guiding us in the future.
Thank you very much for that, Counselor Wilson. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. My thanks as well to Ms. Riddell and and the members of the inclusion committee. Really a good document. Thank you very much. I I want to be so bold as to invite Counselor Butler to, in fact, reconsider the the second part of the motion. Because this is a work in progress and I know that as recently as last week, after this was put into our agenda or committed to the agenda, the inclusion committee has already been working to tighten up some of the wording and and maybe make some additions and and revisions to the final document. So I would suggest that the second bullet point excluding the words based on feedback today still be part of the motion so that committee direct administration to improve the plan based on feedback from the internal inclusion committee and return with a final version in early two thousand twenty-two. I think it's still important that we acknowledge that this is not just for information, that it's an ongoing document and the inclusion committee is still doing some really important work and will come back with a slightly revised form of the master plan in the coming months. So I would think that that is an important part of the motion to receive the report as information and direction, some further work, not that council wants to get involved in the word smithing of the document, but the inclusion committee is already engaged in that important work.
Well, I I'm glad that you said that and I appreciate that and and I will, I will give that to Counselor Butler. And to me, I I just didn't even think that it needed the word early in there either because we don't know what the next council is going to have on their plate to to need to get done. And then there's also going to be the strat plan and and things to start contemplating. So but whatever, I mean, it's just, I think that's tightening up the timeline a little too much, but if administration's confident with that, then we can go forward. Counselor Butler, go ahead. I didn't mean to steal the floor from you.
Thank you. I was going through the same thoughts here because I I I didn't want to suggest either way whether there was going to be feedback in this meeting. But I think the sense is that we're entirely satisfied with what's here and we should do more than just receive for information. So I would certainly add the wording. I think exactly as Mayor Ireland suggested, that we direct administration to revise the plan as required based on the feed, sorry, based on feedback from the internal inclusion committee and return with a final version in two thousand twenty-two. We won't even say early. We'll just say they'll do it when they're ready. And that's meant to be a reflection that I think we here are prepared to endorse the plan as it sits, but understand that those more involved will likely change it between now and then, and that is as it should be.
Well done. Okay. So there's a motion on the floor for that recommendation. All in favor? Non opposed? That's carried. Thank you very much for everyone's effort. Any other comments on this item of the agenda? Seven point two, before we go forward? I'm feeling all warm and fuzzy inside. It meant a lot to me, so. Okay, moving to seven point three, paid parking pilot project update. Can we add more P's in there?
Probably. Deputy Mayor Demota, Deputy Mayor Demota, thanks very much. Just a brief update for council and the community. As you know, the paid parking pilot project has paused. Sorry, I just had to get the last P. It actually has stopped. Has come to a conclusion as the period that council approved has passed. So we have a final update. These are, and I will share my screen, councilman provided with this and this document will be a part of the minutes. So the community will have it as well. But up to October eleventh, these are the results of the program. We saw just over twenty-one thousand tap payments made basically on the street. Those are payments that are made on the street. Sixty-one payments at the administration office. We issued one hundred and eighty-four senior passes and two hundred and forty resident passes. Just interestingly, the resident passes, that's just one last, one more than our last update. It was two hundred and thirty-nine last time. In terms of enforcement, just under twenty-four hundred warnings and only thirty tickets given out in the entire period. And again, as a reminder for council and the community, tickets were only issued after our enforcement officers identified that somebody had previously received a warning and had still not complied. So a very low ticket to payment ratio and also a very low ticket to warning ratio. The net revenue and as a reminder to council, this is net revenue after materials, goods and supplies and commission taken off. But the revenue to the municipality is just under fifty-three thousand dollars for that period. So administration will wrap up the program. We'll get some additional feedback, both from our stakeholder committee and from from the community as a whole through our resident survey. And again, a reminder, our intention was to resident, to survey residents in advance of the initiation of the program to get their sentiment and concerns. And then to survey them again at the conclusion of the program to see if their concerns or sentiment or if the issues have changed. And so our intent there is to be able to measure the difference. Administration will be doing that over the next few weeks. We'll be putting together a final report that has all of the detailed data as well as go forward recommendations and we'll be bringing that to the next council. I would imagine before the end of the year for their consideration. So no decisions to be made on paid parking, just that information to council that the pilot program has concluded. We have gathered data. It appears that it is a positive, a net positive revenue to the municipality that will really allow administration, council and the community to assess the viability of paid parking and any refinements that need to be made to paid parking on a go forward basis. But that will be work for the next council. This council has done its job in in initiating the program, getting this information available out into the community and administration will collate all that information for presentation before the end of this year. So that's the paid parking update, Deputy Mayor Demota.
Thank you very much, Mr. Given. I appreciate that. Counselors, are there any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Keller, I'm.
Thank you, Mr. Given for that and thanks to the staff for collecting that. I look forward to the feedback from the community. I'm just curious, in that is not by law time or administration time? And is that reflected within that that rate or that has to come forward to?
Sure. So Deputy Mayor Demota for Counselor Keller, am he his question? We did discuss this one other time and at that time I reported and would give the same answer that administration has to go through to identify and disaggregate, you know, the the work that bylaw was doing from, you know, we were wandering the streets to talk about placement of bicycles on the streets and and people parking in disabled stalls and reminding people to wear masks versus how much time was actually paid parking time? That's the work that we're going to do in the in the in the the final report to give a better, more accurate reflection of how much administrative time, including my time, finance administration and others, was actually dedicated to the program. And then look at that on a go forward basis, recognize that there are some first year startup costs in in the program that wouldn't be there in ongoing years. So we are going to break that down and again, we'll publish all of that in the final report to council and the community. So council will be able to make decisions based with that that full view of all the information.
Thank you, Mr. Given for that. Thank you, Mr. Given for that.
Thank you very much. Other counselors, Counsel Butler?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you very much for the report, Mr. Given. And I do nonetheless want to delve a little deeper on the question of net revenue and I'll point out that this is because it is probably the single most often expressed concern that I myself have heard out there. So what's net revenue? So we've said, i- in the report says net revenue. So I assume it is not gross revenue, but I have no insight into what expenses are included in that, in that net. So revenue net of what? Could you give us any more revenue information? For example, what was the gross revenue? And just in a loose sense, what expenses have been factored? I understand that some um, some human resources, resources have not been factored because you need more time to suss that out, I understand, but there must be some expenses factored in there.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor Demota for Counsel Butler's question. So this is uh inclusive of materials, goods and supplies. So all of the signs, um, some additional uh equipment, hardware for Enforcement Services Department. Um, the additional costs associated with the startup of the program. So physical things, uh, supplies that were required for the program. It is also uh net of the commission paid to the operator. Uh, so we went with a solution that had relatively low capital costs uh where the operator collects a, essentially a commission for the operation of the system. Uh, and so this number is net of that. Um, and our total revenue um was approximately eighty-two thousand dollars before taxes. Uh, so uh, we, I believe we'd have to take uh taxes off of that eighty-two thousand dollars as well uh because there is also that GST charge on theirs too. So again, uh, that labor cost uh is not included uh because administration has to identify how much of my time, how much of Natasha's time, how much of Neil's time and how much of each individual officer's time should be allocated to this program. And again, I would uh, sorry, uh, I would recognize that we also need to um acknowledge that there are first-year program startup costs. I would not expect that any of my time would be applied to this in future years uh and a significantly reduced amount of administrative time while the Enforcement Services Department would still have some time. So it is that type of calculation that administration will do in the final report, but I hope that gives you some additional uh clarity and, and sorry, just let me uh Natasha's uh providing me a revision. So that is uh eighty-two thousand before tax. So tax would be on top of that eighty-two thousand dollars. So my, I said that that was uh that we'd have to take the tax off of that eighty-two thousand in revenue. Uh, the eighty-two thousand is uh before tax revenue. Uh, so I hope that that provides a little bit of additional clarity and I know that council and the community want to see, well, how much labor went into this? Uh, we will be able to write that in that final report. Um, and we will be able to also give a forecast of what labor costs would look like if the program uh was continued into the future.
Counsel Brett Lee, you'd like to follow up? Thank you, Mr. Given.
Yeah, thank you for that answer. That's the clarification I was looking for. I want to be sure that the community is aware that there is um, administration is not um, is not avoiding including that all-important labor component, but it will take a little bit of time and that will come out in um presumably considerably more complete report. Um, probably a few weeks down the road. Um, my second and last question, Mr. Given, is you referenced the survey, surveying, going in and surveying, coming out, and I'm just wondering how will that survey be conducted? Um, just in, in loose outline, just an open portal on the website or will we be making additional efforts to reach out to the community for input? Thank you.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Demota, uh, while I don't have it at hand, uh, I can confirm that administration will use exactly the same methods that we used in the initial survey, which was more proactive rather than just saying uh putting it up on the municipality's page and, and hoping that people find it. We uh did some direct outreach and a promotion out in the community to ensure that people engaged. Uh, we'll be looking to get as uh close as we can to similar numbers. That means we need to use the same methods and approaches that we did the first time around. Again, we want the data to be comparable so we can compare pre-survey to post-survey. Um, or sorry, pre uh projects to post-project surveys. Um, and so we'll be using exactly the same methods that we did prior, which included a fair bit of engagement to encourage people to participate.
That's great. Thank you. Any more questions from the rest of council? Any, any counselors want to make some comments before we move on? Okay, I appreciate the uh update. Um, before we move on to seven point four, uh, looking at the time, um, I usually like to break an hour and a half in, but uh considering uh the topic, not sure how long that will go. So uh ten minutes, we'll come back at uh a little over ten minutes, we'll, we'll come back at eleven o'clock if that works for the rest of council. Counsel Brett Lee?
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, before we move on, I think for the sake of completeness, we should move to accept the report for information. It isn't included in the agenda. That way it will be included in the minutes and become part of the public record. So I'm, I so move.
Okay. Good point. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you for jumping back in, counselors. You know, uh, we'll see everybody back at eleven o'clock. Thank you. All right. Nice to have everyone back. It's now eleven o'clock. So that brings us to the next uh item on the agenda. Thanks for everybody. Thanks, everyone, for being on time. Seven point four Jasper Community Housing Corporation update. Counsel Butler?
Thank you very much, everyone. I will do my best to not take too much time here, but I feel it is very important to put a little bit of a update report on the public record uh coming to the end of this council term. Uh, last month, month, the JCHC held a strategic planning workshop and the outcomes we can expect in the coming weeks. Uh, one of those outcomes was a recognition that the JCHC should report more frequently to the community. So this is a part of a response to that. Um, I expect I will take about ten minutes here. I wish I had pictures, but I have no pictures. So um, my intention is to provide a brief status report for the JCHC and a minimum of background for context. And just, I'm doing this to facilitate a smooth transition uh between this and the next term and maintain momentum as far as possible on the housing front. Uh, in twenty sixteen, JCHC determined ongoing low vacancy rates posed a threat to the health of Jasper's visitor economy and agreed that options are limited for seniors to downsize as well. So where more options could potentially free housing better suited for families. So as a result, lists of people were drawn up at that time and interested businesses to collaborate to reach solutions and in the case of the businesses, seed funding was asked for and received from those businesses as an indication of their commitments and to raise funds for a consultation phase that many of us will remember, which then happened in early twenty eighteen. So three parcels of land were identified at that time as being most suitable for future housing development. These were parcel G C on Canot Drive. That's the one next to the Petro Canada, the current RCMP site, which the current RCMP building is of course still sitting on and the parcel bordered by Bear Hill Lodge, Ascend Crescent and Bear Hill. So in twenty seventeen, a consulting firm, Perio Plan, was hired to conduct public workshops to discuss envisioned housing options for these three sites focusing on seniors and staff housing. The consultations were held in January twenty eighteen. These meetings were successful in providing visions for housing on the three land parcels, uh, though the lessons learned could be certainly applied to other parcels in town. The resulting report is well worth reading and I hope that uh any few, any residents interested in affordable housing in Jasper in the future will read that report if you haven't already done so. He did. These discussions were initially intended to focus on staff and seniors housing, as I said, but during the workshops, the view emerged that family-appropriate housing is also a real concern and that Bear Hill site is possibly most suited for this, though no options were eliminated. So that's the three pieces of land. The most readily available land was parcel G C on Canot Drive and the most urgent need was felt at that time to be for the younger newly arrived residents or what we sometimes call staff housing. Though in Jasper, when we look at that demographic, we're all staff. So therefore, the JCHC turned its attention to developing a plan for parcel G C. We worked with um the consultants, colliers, project leaders and an affordable housing model was developed, including a financial pro forma for parcel G C. The model is referred to as the co-investment model because the financial foundation involves periodic ongoing investments by a collection of businesses on a zero-equity basis. So it's a cooperative, not-for-profit and zero-equity model intended to facilitate the release of the lands from Parks Canada at that critical submarket value. This is similar to the case in the way in which land has been released for co-op housing developments in Jasper. The intent was to proceed with this development starting with co-investment from the firms which had provided that initial seed funding in twenty sixteen. JCHC advanced that concept to municipal council and council approved in principle moving forward with it. It's an important point and I want to underline this because the model would require debt financing and that would likely have to be provided by the municipality, would likely fall within the municipality's debt ceiling. Model does demonstrate sustainability by ensuring that that municipal debt would be repaid over the life of the project with interest by rental incomes. So there would be full financial recovery by the municipality. COVID halted the conversation for around eight months last year because of urgent, other urgent priorities and because expecting investment from the visitor sector, tourism sector at that time didn't seem realistic. Nonetheless, last fall, in the fall of twenty twenty, we restarted with a review and want to revive the co-investment model. This was concurrent with the change in governance of the JCHC when I was appointed chair and at that time, Mr. Furchill moved on and we awaited the arrival of our new CEO, Mr. Given. So in that intervening period where we were operating without a resident CEO, exactly that time in October of twenty twenty, the federal government announced that large grant program we've been talking about, the Rapid Housing Initia- Initiative or what I call the RHI. So that is under the federal, federal national housing strategy. Our consultant colliers working on a co-investment model suggested with some changes that our project could qualify for that grant program. So the board discussed and approved that change or a little bit of pivoting of that model away from the co-investment funding model to a fully um public-funded model utilizing that grant. So setting aside for a moment that co-investment framework, the board reworked the model in order to apply for that grant. While the target, target demographic of the project remained the same, so that younger newly arrived resident demographic, the new model also addressed specific vulnerable sectors, including women with children at risk of domestic violence as well as new and racialized Canadians. And that was in keeping with the intent of the grant program. So we were able to pivot the program, gram, the project for the grant application because we had already done a great deal of work to make the project ready for launch. Uh, we already have waiting in the wings uh companies, construction companies, ready to proceed under design-build-construction model. And um that project remains as shovel-ready as we can keep it, awaiting um movement forward. The initial application for the grant was submitted um in early January twenty twenty. We were told it was a strong application, but we were unsuccessful. However, we were invited in June to resubmit when the federal government decided to run a second intake. So we made some enhancements to the model to better shape the requirements. Um, and in both those iterations of preparing this model, I do want to point to and thank the community and Family Services Department and Mrs. Waxer and her whole team for giving us a lot of help in um positioning these applications for that grant. So where was I? So we enhanced the model and we resubmitted at the end of August, just a couple of months ago, and we're now awaiting the result of that application. And uh every morning, I hope will be the morning that the phone rings to tell the community that they're going to give us eight million dollars for affordable housing. So I cannot overstate the importance of that potential grant for a community. It would represent, represent a huge win for us and would fund the majority of an approximately fifteen million dollar build for forty perpetual affording affordable housing units for vulnerable residents. And I want to thank council for your, the support and JCHC board members for your support in bringing that project in, trying to bring that project to the community. And in particular, to acknowledge council's willingness to make the difficult decision to fund the needed in-ground infrastructure. So having talked about that RHI grant application, I'll return to the other option for parcel G C, which is the co-investment model. If the grant-funded model proceeds, this would still leave the potential for at least forty more affordable units on the other half of parcel G C. Again, that's the parcel next to the Petro Canada or at least eighty units if the grant project does not proceed. So we have the potential to build eighty or more units on the property either or using either or both the co-investment model or the grant-funded model. Sorry, I lost my place. So the board is of the view that even as we wait to hear about the grant program, we should try to advance the co-investment model. So therefore, in just this past few weeks, I've held conversations with a number of co-investment participants who committed those funds back in twenty sixteen to try to gauge their continued interest now that we um, we hope are starting to move out of the age of COVID. So I've had time to talk to only a few and I focused for the time being on some of the larger participants. So I want to mention that because um we have not forgotten about smaller participants. We know you're out there and we recognize that you did contribute. I wanted to get a sense of whether there was some sort of critical mass ready that might want to move, help move the co-investment model forward. So I can report that interest is very high um despite COVID and I'm pleased to see that. And the need for entry-level housing for newly arrived residents is as dire as it has ever been. I do want to underline this important point and that is that there's concern that the zero-equity aspect of the model may represent a stumbling block. Participants are worried that without equity or some sort of ownership share in the project, they may find it difficult to raise the funds needed for their co-investment installments. And this is something that came up at the board table. And Director Counselor Wilson at the board table also pointed out this concern and that we could expect to run into this uh concern. Everyone that I have approached, I think across the board, understands that the project would have to remain entirely not-for-profit, that any investor equity, if there were to be any investor equity could not in any way grow. Um, no one could ever in any way make money on their investment, but borrowing or any cash draw in a corporate environment without some form of equity may prove impossible for some investors. So that is a concern that has arisen that I believe the JCHC is going to have to address. I think it could be addressed by reconsidering some aspects of the model, but we do need to understand that the business investment and equity aspect of the model is managed in a way to support that hugely important submarket value land release. And that's really critical for everyone on all sides to understand. Nonetheless, I think we are going to have to reconsider or look for a way to reassess that aspect of model. So it's my strong hope that discussions to advance the co-investment model for housing on parcel G A will be continued by the next iteration of the Board of Directors of JCHC and will be supported by future council. by future council. I want to highlight two important aspects of the process um, that I just described for developing these two affordable housing models. The first is that with timelines as tight as they were to apply for the grant. We had to arrange for release of part of parcel G C into the hands of the J C H C for the grant application. That process, as we all probably know, can be very time consuming. And I want to point to the Parks Canada Realty Office and thank them for all of the help that they provided to the J C H C to expedite that process. Parks Canada was immeasurably helpful in that. Parks Canada has always been a major part of the J C H C conversation, holds an ex officio seat on the board. And has always been a willing and helpful party. So I want to thank Parks Administration for that cooperation and assistance. Second point is that the J C H C recommended to council that funding be allocated for the in-ground services to support these projects. As we know, council responded favorably. Some of that work, it's important to understand, forms part of the municipality's financial contribution for that grant application. So we could not realistically even have applied for the grant without that work being committed to. So and the other point about those in-ground services that I want to make sure is clear to the public. Is that that in-ground service work is necessary for the housing along Canot with or without a successful grant application because we do intend to proceed with the co-investment build. If the application is unsuccessful or possibly in addition to a successful grant. And finally, relative to those services, I want to mention a potential housing construction on the adjoining parcel. So that's parcel G B, the one that is not next to um, Petro Canada. So some years ago, a previous council together with J C H C requested that Parks Canada make that parcel available for market housing. And Parks agreed to do that. And as we know, they did that. The parcel was appraised and placed on the market. And as we know, there's now a proposal under consideration for private sector housing on that site. So those in-ground services are necessary for that project as well. And if that project proceeds, some of the funding for those in-ground services will be recuperated through a local improvement levy that would be applicable to that private development. And I'm not sure that those nuances, nuances around that in-ground services decision have been um, really understood by the public. So I just wanted to understood that the G B parcel is a private equity project, a private sector project, not connected to the J C H C. While the project's being looked at next to the Petro Can would be public sector potentially affordable housing developments. And both of those kinds of developments, of course, are very important for future housing in Jasper. So I'll come now to my final point and thank you for your patience. An additional possibility has come to light for seniors housing in Jasper. As the Jasper United Church informed the J C H C that they are interested in making part of their parcel of land on Geek Street available for seniors housing. And I had reported on this um. Previously, I just want to speak to it briefly. Regrettably, no measurable progress has been made in that area largely due to honestly straightforward lack of capacity. I have talked with some of the community members, some community members about this, and I hope some progress facilitated by J C H C could be made in coming year because there is a great deal of potential there. What we will need, however, to move that concept forward is for some committed group of potential investor residents interested in developing some sort of not-for-profit housing there. For that, some interested group to come together and come forward and state an attempt to form um, a co-op not-for-profit or a sort of like potentially like lease model to proceed there. I do not believe that there is likely to be a way that the community can see fit to develop land there. At community expense. But nonetheless, I have high hopes for that potential. So there is more to tell in this story, but I don't want to go at greater length. My goal was to hit the high points and get some of the key messages about progress in J C H C onto the record. Even though the only visible progress to date has been, well, a really big trench in the ground. But that is an important trench. So I hope very much that the good work of the J C H C will continue into the future and I'm confident that the community can expect to see positive affordable housing outcomes in the next couple of years. Finally, I'd like to thank municipal council, the J C H C board members for your support. And I will take this opportunity to mention by name the members of that board. So in addition to myself, we have Mr. Given as C A O. We have Council Wilson as a sitting member of council, Council McGrath as an alternate from council. We have Valerie Glaves, a newly joined member, and also Trevor LaScal, also joined just in twenty twenty one. We have ex officio for Parks Canada, Wyver McKinnon. We have ex officio for Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce, Patty Pavlov. And ex officio for Evergreens Foundation, we have Kristen Chambers. Thank you to all of those board members for your enthusiasm and assistance. And also, we have as our administrator for the board, Leanne Peltier. Who adminis, does the administration work for J C H C and also I should point out does an excellent job of administering intakes for the Mountain Park Lodge N P L Place, which is an affordable housing project, of course. So Leanne, thank you very much for your assistance over the past four years. I appreciate your indulgence, counselors, and listening to me. Go on and put this on the record and I will submit the content of that report um, to be included in minutes. That concludes what I wanted to report, but I am available should there be any questions from our counselors.
Thank you for that, Counselor Butler. Much appreciated. We have Counselor Wilson, uh, Counselor McGrath, and then Counselors, you know. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that, Counselor Butler. Very uh. It's word, uh, anyway, uh, it's very in-depth and I, you know, honestly, I couldn't catch everything and because there was so much to catch. And I'm hoping that you have, I think you're reading a little bit, uh, not to say that you weren't looking at the camera. But I know you probably got something on paper that you could probably submit to uh. I get Mr. Given, uh, mostly to be able to share with future council.
I thank you, um, Counselor Wilson. I was reading entirely. Uh, it's true. And I have exactly what I reported written down. So it will be a written report, but it will read a little like a speech because I wrote it to be read. But yes, it will. I, that was my purpose here was to make sure it was placed on the public record.
Thank you. Good couple of questions and maybe just clarification because it, you know, um. You've been in the, the role uh, for longer than, and or on the board for longer than most of us.
Sure.
Is it, okay, so I think the thing that has been weighing on me a little bit is um. How municipal, or how, how should council or should we give council, new council some direction on? And caution them on how to go about taxing these buildings? So the, this new affordable housing build, in the past, we've struggled with um. How to put it into words? I guess, you know, let's bring up the co-op housing and, you know, it, they're, they're a bit of a low e- economic return on resale uh, model. Whereas this will be the same. I think we've all, we, everybody on council has recognized that those are challenging uh, in regards to taxation. And with the, you know, what, once they're, they're, they won't have the ability to uh um, inflate with, uh, with, in, sorry, inflate in. Uh, assessment. So there, that, that those taxes will always remain fixed. Uh, I know it's a large topic to get into, but it, how, I think we have to just at least suggest to new council, you'll, you don't have to be very weary about how, how we're fixing taxation on that, that, that building as well.
Sure. Well, um, it's, it's, as you said, a huge issue. I will deal with your second point before I answer with my opinion on your first question. You pointed to a really important piece in the community. I think in fact, there was some mention of this even in one of the forums. Um, so it is on people's minds. The more affordable housing we have, that is affordable with a capital A, meaning it is equity controlled or rent controlled. The lower overall goes the um, residential tax income to the community because the only way or almost the only way communities can tax is based on the property value of the asset and that, that value cannot grow under these models. So it is a really important issue. And one that we did not really address this term, I think mostly. Uh, due to covid, it was on our strategic plan to discuss and at least sort of be willing to talk about potential solutions for the future. So it's a really important issue. And uh, well done to raise it. Do I think that we as the J C H C, if that's what you're referring to, is we should um, suggest or direct this or future council? No, I don't think so. I think that questions of that taxation belong entirely and firmly in the hands of municipal council. But I'm very happy that you brought it up because it is a critically important issue. I think that the fact that these projects by their nature are not taxed heavily or if at all. And an example of that would be something like Pine Grove Manor. Or Alpine Summit Seniors Lodge, which are affordable housing projects. The fact that they are not taxed should never be a reason not to build them. We, we have to build these Jasper needs more affordable housing projects. But you've placed a really important issue on the table to be dealt with. But no, I myself as Chair of the J C H C, I would not recommend that that body recommend or even delve into that issue. It is purview of council.
Yeah.
I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, thank you. I, yeah, I just wanted to get it on the record. I didn't know how we could, you know, answer it today, but of course, municipal council will have to deal with that in the future.
Exactly. Sorry, I was going to say, just to be clear, I'm answering that with my opinion.
Yeah.
As current Chair, a future iteration of the um, J C H C certainly could take a different view. So to be fair, it's just my opinion that you asked for and that's what I think.
Yeah, and with, with that, to, to my second point, um, in my opinion, and I think uh, uh, others on the J C H C board. To move these projects forward, um. We, we most likely will need to um, staff the, the board. So I, I think we, there has been some suggestion of a project manager uh, to assist us moving, moving forward. Um, i- if we're going to see, uh, you know, large results in this. And I, I just maybe want to put that out there as well. Um, for the board because the board members will change after the election and um, definitely consider a a project manager because that can't, all that, if, all that work can't be on say, uh, Mr. Given's shoulders or Counselor Butler's shoulders or my shoulders or whomever is on that uh, board because it's a lot of work. It's a, it's, it's almost a dedicated position. And I, I think we're getting to the place where you need to, to, you know, hire up to, to see, see progress. And I just want to put that out there as well.
Well, I'm really glad you mentioned that. And in fact, um, it's really an oversight that I didn't mention that because that also was fairly clear already out of our scrap planning session. Um, I'm not sure that we have needed that person thus far. But if we do assemble a group of interested investors for the co-investment project, or if we get the grant. Or if we are going to build something, we're going to need a person in place. Res, human resources will become a stumbling block. So I'm really glad you mentioned that and I certainly agree. And in fact, I'll, I'll insert that recommendation into this report. I'm really glad you mentioned that.
Thank you. Yeah, that's all I have to, to add and appreciate the, uh, the report and.
Thank you.
Thank you for that discussion, Counselor McGrath and then Counselors, you know.
Thank you very much Deputy Mayor Demoda and thank you very much Counselor Butler for your report. I'm glad Counselor Wilson asked the question about, is this written? Because this is the type of report that the community has been asking for and wanting to see. So I'm, I'm really glad that this will be able to share, to be shared more widely and to be seen by all community members. I, I'd like to take a, a moment also to express enormous gratitude to Counselor Butler for your work as the Chair of this board and for your work. And your enormous contributions to moving housing projects in Jasper forward throughout your, your four years on council. That the time and energy that you've committed to housing and the J C H C has been a, a a great contribution and um, I'm just very grateful for all of the time, energy and contributions that you've given all of us and for future generations. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much for that. It's heartfelt and I appreciate it very much. It's close to, the, this work has been very close to my heart. Um, I also want to thank you, Council McGrath, for uh, actually being the one at the board table and in the scrap planning uh, to really point to the need to be more communicative to the community about this. Because sometimes there can be the sense that there's really no work going on. Because we don't see a building rising. And so I really appreciate you pushing for a, a report like this to happen from time to time. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor McGrath, you're good at yanking on people's heartstrings. And I know it's not, it's just, it's something that, you know, I've always appreciated. Uh, Counselors, you know.
Thank you Deputy Chairman. Um, I also want to congratulate Counselor Butler for the fine work that he's done in the preparation of this report. It's very comprehensive, very informative and very timely. Thank you. No question.
Thank you, Counselor.
All right. Well, you know, uh, for someone that has served on that board, I think pretty much for the, the whole term prior to, to twenty seventeen. Um, I, I understand the work uh, that, that's gone behind, um, you know, the beginning of this project and, and continuing on. And um, you know, I find it healthy. And if there's anything, any recommendations I can go make forward is that I, I think continuity with, uh, you know, an existing counselor. Um, hopefully some of us who, who are here now will have the opportunity to go forward. Um, I think for as far as succession going, there should be a little bit of a rotation on that board and, and I didn't think so, uh, just because I think it, when I was there, because I think it's important to, for people to go to, to stay in the positions to see things move forward. At the same time, I think that if we have more than one person there. It gives an opportunity to, you know, keep that, that corporate history going uh, as, at the council level. Which I find is important. So, um, you know, having, having um, understanding that I needed to step back on my request to be on that board. Uh, the people that have represented me and, and, and the people that I've worked with, I, I the advancement that has been made particularly in this area, I'm very grateful for. And uh, I know that some great things will come out of this again. So, you know, the other counselors that I've served with on, on this term. Um, I didn't directly work with Counselor Wilson, but I was, I was happy to see him participate. Counselor McGrath and Counselor Butler, thank you very much. Um, you know, it, it certainly is an honor to have you represent us on that board. And I think some great things have been done. Um, so everyone deserves a lot as well as the people that um. Paul had mentioned and including the new members. So a lot of work again. And I think going forward, um, the people that um, will be going into, uh, going on to the board uh, are in good hands. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Demoda. I do want to say that with respect to continuity between um, this term and the next. That was of course the reason for my making this report when I realized that today would be my last opportunity to do that. But as to continuity. Um, this would, this is a big file and Mr. Given worked really hard to bring himself up to date on it. Um, it is not by accident of design that the C A O of the municipality of Jasper also sits as the C E O of the Jasper Community Housing Corporation. And that is interestingly also a voting seat. So Mr. Given will, I know, ensure that there is continuity and that new board members are well informed. Um, I'm absolutely certain of that. So there is always that piece of continuity. So there is always that piece of continuity in place, and that's by design. Thank you very much, everyone. There's no further questions.
All right. Should there be a motion to accept that as information? I've lost my screen here. I apologize. Council Wilson?
I'll make the motion. Although, along with written backup, I think if Council Butler can supply, that would be great to.
Yeah, I will.
Okay, that's great. I really, I really appreciate the report, and, you know, it didn't feel long at all. There was some really valid information there. So having an attached report like that, I think, would be really good as far as, you know, the minutes of this meeting goes. Okay, so Council Wilson, Council Wilson has motion. Any debate? Okay. All in favor? Thank you for that. That's been carried. All right, before we move on to agenda item number eight, are there any other things that someone would like to bring up for seven point four? Okay, so correspondence? It doesn't appear that we have any correspondence for on the agenda for today that I caught. Does anybody have anything to add? Okay, that brings us to the agenda item number nine, the motion action list. Mr. Given? Go ahead, please.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Demota. I'll be brief. There are a number of items that can be removed, starting from the top, the COVID Relief Reserve, the income-based utility rebates program that was delivered today. And so I believe that this item can come off. Any additional work on the COVID Relief Reserve will be left to the next council. But this council has received the all of the items that it directed administration to present. The Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Policy Implementation Plan that was delivered in the form of the master plan that was here in front of council. The paid parking pilot project updates were an ongoing item with those minor updates that were provided. Of course, the next council will receive the full project report. But it is, there's no need to have that on the motion action list, as administration is well aware of that direction, and that will be coming, as I related before, to the next council before the end of the year. The community conversations policy on the second page at the top, where we would recommend that that item could be deleted. There it was kept there because there was a small portion related to the resources required to enact the new community conversations focus areas. Administration has put that as an item on our budget discussions, and so it is already on the budget agenda and can be removed from the motion action list. And then finally, the Jasper air quality monitoring. We have been in touch with the West Central Airshed Society. We have made arrangements and are just waiting on them to come out and install the air monitoring station on municipal property. But that is underway. There won't be any further action that council is, you know, needs to be updated on. It will just happen based on the availability from the West Central Airshed Society. So it should be in the next few weeks. And you would end up seeing Jasper added as an air quality monitoring station to their network of stations across across the region. And those are the updates and items that I would recommend could be deleted from the from the list. There are a couple of items that we're suggesting should be shifted. Obviously, the Principles for Utility Rates Bylaw is not going to happen within October. So we see that coming to the next council likely in the course of the budget, in the context of the budget discussion. And additionally, there is one, there was one, oh, the the report on the Mountain Makers presentation that was made in July, we see that coming to the December, in the December timeframe. And so those deletions that I previously mentioned, and those two updates to timing would be the changes that we would ask council to approve as presented with a motion.
Council Juno?
I'd be delighted to make a motion to acknowledge and approve the report on motion action list as presented today. Thank you.
All right. If administration was able to gather all that, and we understand the motion, is there are there any other questions or anything to discuss before I call it? Bill? Okay, all in favor? That's that's approved. Carried. All right. That brings us to agenda item ten, council representation on various boards in upcoming meetings. Does anyone have anything to report, Council McGrath?
Thank you very much, Council, sorry, Deputy Mayor Demota. I will be attending a library meeting locally tomorrow evening, as well as a community conversation tomorrow afternoon.
Council Keller, Mayor Ireland, and then Council Butler.
This afternoon, I will be attending a community futures IRC meeting at two thirty. Then Council Wilson, I will be attending a community futures board meeting at three o'clock today. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota. More in the nature of a of a report, but council representation, I suppose, on on boards covers that. Just a very quick update as this may be the last opportunity to do so. As you will recall, I had a meeting with a senior official in the Department of the Environment relating to the new impetus on on land rent. So council had dedicated twenty thousand dollars from the COVID relief fund to to deal with that issue. We met in September, got some information about other individuals we might meet with Thursday of last week with a consultant. We met with an individual from the Privy Council Office, so that is essentially the administrative arm to cabinet. They don't hold any files themselves, so they can't assist directly. But through that meeting, we received a number of other names that we might liaise with in order to continue to push the the matter forward. Mr. Given is fully familiar with the ongoing work of of our consultant and will stay on touch. So as things develop, Mr. Given will be in a position to keep new council informed. But just to let you know that 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 file continues to be active and we continue to get names of other individuals in various departments in the federal government that might be able to influence the outcome. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Council Butler, will you next?
I think so. Thank you. I will be attending my final meeting, Mr. of the Evergreens Foundation on Thursday. Thank you.
All right. Anything else to report? I don't. As I continue to struggle with my devices, I apologize. Thank you for your patience. If we have no other matters to discuss under ten, that moves us to eleven upcoming events. Does anyone have anything to add that might have been forgotten there? Council Wilson?
I heard through an individual that the municipality of Jasper that, and I brought it up last week, that indeed there may be a municipal Christmas party. So we should get it on there, just you know, a placeholder. I think it's being planned for, and if everything works out well, we can we can celebrate a couple of hard years. So might as well throw that on there. I'm not sure the dates, but I think administration does.
Well, there's a I hopefully there's that opportunity there. So just to go through it, we've got the Chamber of Commerce, the Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce meeting tomorrow at seven thirty AM. Also tomorrow is the advance votes, and the activity center is open for between three and eight for those who need to get an early vote or want to go early. And then the institutional vote is October thirteenth, same day, at Seton Hospital, Pine Grove Manor, and Alpine Summit Seniors Home. All right, municipal election day next Monday, October eighteenth, at the Activity Center, ten AM to eight PM. The Chamber of Commerce Annual Ambassador Business Awards is going to be held virtually on October twentieth, and the AUMA Conference November seventeenth to the nineteenth at the Edmonton Convention Center. And I'm not sure if if I haven't heard if that was a for sure thing, or if we're gonna go virtual again. Has anyone been able to confirm that?
At this stage, AUMA is planning on an in-person convention within public health restrictions, but of course, they'll adjust as necessary. They are also providing a opportunity for people to attend and participate virtually using some of the lessons of their convention in 2020. So I think it's a full steam ahead for a limited in-person convention with the additional opportunity for people who wish to to attend virtually.
Okay, that's great. Good information there, and I'm sorry if I'm getting you to repeat that. Now, with me chairing, it usually comes around with some sort of deputy Demota mess around, and I used to like to mix up our chairs at council or bring donuts or do something different. And seeing as this is our last meeting together, and just kind of veering off process a little bit, and I know that that kind of irks some people, but having the last opportunity as this council, I just like to go around and, you know, call on counselors to offer any thoughts or you know, closing comments and go for it. And no campaign speeches, please. Council Juno?
I'll I'll wait here at my house for the donut.
Okay.
By the way, it's my last meeting, too. I managed to get one of the last motions in. I can't say enough about the four years that we've been together. We've been great partners, great team. And it was, for the most part, more than just fun. It was it was a great opportunity. Thank you.
All right. Council McGrath and Council Keller.
I totally have something prepared, and I thank you for this opportunity, Council Demota, as much as it might not be in line with process. It's, you know, the thought of coming into today's meeting and there not be any closure necessarily. I'm happy to take a moment. Jasper, it's been a pleasure, an honor, and a privilege to serve you for the past four years. You put your trust in me and gave me the opportunity to come as far as I've been able to today. For that, I'm truly grateful. I am proud of the way I was able to grow, learn, and lead. I have demonstrated commitment to the elected official position and my ability to represent the heart of our community, to make decisions with love, compassion, and empathy. I am pleased that I was able to work with honesty, selflessness, integrity, and passion guiding me, and can say that this experience has been profound and rewarding in so many ways. I'd love to offer gratitude to all of those who did this work and put the energy in before me. To our past councils and mayor, thank you. To our current outgoing council and mayor, it's been an honor to be in this family with you, to be learning aside you. Thank you for what you've given to our community. To administration and Mr. Given, you're all amazing. You're committed. You work so hard and do so much. To the men and women putting their names in for future council, good for you. Thank you for stepping up in a challenging time and offering your service. To the women who I have hopefully had a chance to inspire, keep on going. I'm looking forward to continuing to work hard for our town and continue to foster unity, inclusion, and love. Remember to treat each other with kindness, with love, to build each other up at any opportunity, and to take care of one another. With so much love. Thank you.
Thank you, Council McGrath. Council Keller.
Thank you, Council McGrath. That was beautiful. As always, you are beautiful. I want to thank everybody I've served with. It's been an honor, and I will miss those that if I get elected again, that I will be working with. I hope to carry the charge forward. It's been very incredible for years, very different from my first four years. I think we've done some great work. And I'd like to thank everybody that I've served with. Thank you. And I'd like to thank administration. I thank Mr. Given and the team. It has been wonderful this past year going forward. It's been tough times during COVID, and I think everybody has done a great job to move the ship forward. And I'd also like to thank our community for their trust in us. Thank you.
Council Wilson, did I see your hand up?
Well, yes, thank you. Well, it wasn't up. I would have loved the the opportunity to speak. Again, going third, fourth, or fifth, you a lot of things that you were about to say or or wanted to say, at least get said, but and and often quite more eloquently. Thank you for that, all of council, that you've been amazing to serve with, challenging at points, but great because we are challenging all each other, each other. And that's really what a healthy council should look like. We we challenged each other almost every meeting, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate all everybody for participating. Thank you to the community for giving me the opportunity to serve over the last four years and and administration, of course, is always in the background doing all the hard work. Appreciate everybody. Thank you. Hope to see you again.
Okay, so at the sake of of having the last word, because I I know that I've been accused of that. I'm gonna go now, then Council Butler, and then and then I'm gonna put the mayor on the spot, because I I think it's appropriate that he close. Anyway, I I tend to get emotional, so I wanted to get this over with. Not for the sake of getting over with, but because sometimes I have no control over, you know, becoming her clan. Administration, thank you very much for all the curveballs and the diversity that you've had to deal with, changing of direction. Sometimes some of it was planned, you know, along the course of the way, and some of it wasn't. So I appreciate all the work that's been done there. Very welcoming to have a new CAO with a positive direction, and I think we're in good hands. And then as far as, you know, my fellow counselors. I can do this. Okay, so I'm stronger, smarter, and I I think more resilient because of the efforts that we've put towards, you know, making our community a better place to live. But also, you know, I think a good council is made up of people there to support each other. And going forward for future councils, you know, it's not just about the debate that you're gonna have in council chambers, but it's gonna be the behind-the-scenes support. And I think you're stronger that way because everybody's got something in common, and that's the love for the community. But also the weight that that puts on you, and I think that we've all done incredibly well. So I'll I'll turn the floor over to Council Butler and then to Mayor Ireland. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Demota. I was not expecting this, so I am not prepared. I will be brief. I want to thank, express my appreciation and gratitude to Mayor Ireland, to council and administration, all of staff, for everyone's contribution over what has been an interesting, vibrant, challenging, and from time to time for everyone's contribution over what has been an interesting, vibrant, challenging and from time to time difficult term. Thank you to the community for your support and understanding. I have every confidence in the future town council and counselors to look out for the best interests for the future of Jasper. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for that, Mayor Ireland.
Well, thank you, Counsel Demota, I suppose, for the opportunity. Although I might have declined had it been put to me in a in a different fashion, it it takes us, I think, to to the edge of process. But recognizing that it is an important opportunity that you provide. And so I will take this moment to acknowledge the really hard work that this council has done in challenging time. It is it is most commendable. I think it's appropriate to recognize that the community sees these meetings, particularly since they've been live livestreamed for the last twenty months or so. What the community does not see is the incredible amount of work and dedication exhibited by all counselors in their committee assignments. And that that is the real work of of council sometimes is to sit on internal and external committees and boards where relationships are built and outcomes are are fostered. And it is the sort of work that no one knows better than those who sit on council. So within the community, I recognize that each of you is now much better and best positioned to let others know what's in store for them. So I thank you all for the work that you've done. And I share with you accolades to administration who have supported this council as they have supported previous councils. We cannot get our work done without the benefit of a really strong administrative team. And we're lucky to have that. So I thank them as well. And I take the opportunity to thank others in the community. I was so pleased to hear Counselor Butler earlier today give accolades to Parks Canada on the housing file. It is absolutely critical that we get that level of support and that we acknowledge that level of support. And we have that in this community. So I thank you all and wish you all again. And I know that I have made new friends and better friends through this process. And so I I look forward to maintaining those in the months and years to come. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for for all that. That'll bring us to agenda item twelve. May I have a motion to go in camera? Okay, we're going into camera at eleven fifty six. For those of you that are viewing or are going to see this later on, I don't think that there's any more to discuss when we come back out of camera. This is just a personnel matter with a C A O performance feedback. Oh, point of order, Mayor Ireland, please.
I never get to do that. I made a motion that we move in camera, but we do need to vote on.
Yeah, what if I was getting to that? Okay. I have a motion to go in camera at eleven fifty six. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you, everyone. We won't need to 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 come back live again. So I appreciate that. I think that's it.
Do we or will we receive a new link?
Yes, it should be in your inbox, Mayor Ireland and council. It should be there for you momentarily and I'll open up the meeting.
Thank you, everyone. It's been a blast.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.